Time for our people to wake up. And we out here to show you blacks, Hispanics, and Native Americans who you are according to the Bible. That's right. Every time y'all have y'all meetings, you lead the Israelites out.
Bring it out, Ox.
And that's the reason why you would never get a solution to what's going on in the neighborhoods. How the hell would you ever meet down here at the Civil Rights Museum instead of meet in the neighborhoods where the crime is going on?
Bring it out, Ox.
People to wake up.
That's right.
Give me Hosea real quick. Give me Hosea, chapter four, verse one. It's time for our people to wake up, repent, and keep God's commandments.
That's right.
You are the Israelites the Bible speaks of. Y'all wanna stop crying in Memphis? Our people need to wake up and keep God's commandments.
That's right.
To keep God's commandments. Read what you got. Hosea, chapter four, and verse one. Listen to this black man, listen, read.
Hear the words of the Lord.
It said, "Hear the words of the Lord," read.
Ye children of Israel.
God talking to you, Israelites. You are the Israelites the Bible speaks of.
That's right.
Your names was changed to slavery, read.
For the Lord hath a controversy within inhabitants of the land.
The most I God said he got a controversy within inhabitants in Memphis. Why, read?
Because there is no truth.
God said there's no truth?
Nor mercy.
Nor mercy, read.
Nor knowledge of God in the land.
God said there's no knowledge of God in the land. Our people don't keep God's commandments. And the hell is Memphis? The heart of the Bible built, but the churches don't teach our people God's laws. Y'all wanna see crime in the community? The churches just need to start with the churches first. Time for our people to wake up and repent. Read what you got.
Isaiah, chapter one, and verse three.
Read.
The ox knoweth his owner.
God said the ox knoweth his owner. A ox know who his master is, read.
And the ass, his master's crew.
If a donkey get lost, he can find his way home, read.
But Israel.
But Israel, Israel, the Israelites, you so-called black people, read.
Does not know.
Ask them who his God is. Ask our people who their God is, read.
My people does not consider.
Ask them where they land at. Ask them where they land at, read on.
A sinful nation, a people laden with the iniquity.
God said our people is a sinful nation laden with iniquity. Our people don't know who they are, where they come from. The proof and the pudding of that, we sitting up here arguing about it right now. That's Bible prophecy right there. Give me Jeremiah seventeen and four.
Can I give more info on that?
Jeremiah seventeen and four. We on the www.israel united.org.
Some of the local.
Sixteen sixty-one Lamar, this is how it's good.
Yeah, I'm gonna show you.
How it be. Read what you got. Jeremiah seventeen, verse four. Time for our people to wake up and come back to the knowledge of God. Come back to the law statutes and commandments of the Most High. Y'all wanna fix Memphis? Let's teach our people God's laws. Y'all wanna fix Memphis? Stop censoring the Israelites and stop rejecting the word of God. Read what you got.
Jeremiah, chapter seventeen, and verse four.
Read.
And thou, even thyself.
God said, "And thou, even thyself," read.
Shall discontinue from thine heritage.
The Israelites discontinue from their heritage, read.
That I gave thee.
That God gave us. God gave us a heritage to be a chosen people. And he said, "If we don't keep his commandments," he said, "our people was gonna go into captivity." Read.
And I will cause thee to serve thine enemy in the land which thou knowest not.
He said, "No, my cause, yo, who serving their enemy in the land that they knowest not?" We serving our enemy in the land that we knowest not. We in the land of our captivity. That brother came up here to cause confusion. To cause confusion. Imagine this. Have not our people tried, been trying to do what he's talking about doing for years? Why come it never worked? Why come? I'm gonna show you why it don't work. Give me Deuteronomy twenty. The Bible says, "Israelites, not no Africans," read what you got.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Deuteronomy twenty-eight, verse twenty-nine, read what you got. Listen to this.
Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-eight, and verse twenty-nine.
Read.
And thou shall grope at noonday.
The most I say our people grope at noonday, read.
As the blind gropeth in darkness.
Who trying to find their way? There ain't some stuff that our people trying to find their way in. Our people trying to find their way in politics. They trying to find their way in Christianity. They trying to find their way in Islam. They trying to find their way in college. He said, "You gonna grope at noonday, man, you gonna try to find your way," read.
As the blind gropeth in darkness.
Just like a blind man trying to find his way in darkness, read.
And thou shall not prosper in thy way.
God said, "Is we a prosperous people? A nation of..." We are not a prosperous nation of hell. Do you hear the me? Father, God, us killing each other. That's what we prosperous at. We prosperous at destroying each other.
Bring it out, Ox.
We can do that good. We got the solution right now, and the solution is God's law statutes and commandments right now.
That's right.
The solution is the solution is to invite the Israelites and let them show you who you are according to the Bible up in your community meets.
Bring it out, Ox.
That's the solution right there. Read what you got.
And thou shall be only oppressed.
God said, "Look, you ain't gonna prosper in none of your ways and shall only be oppressed in one."
And spoiled evermore.
Read.
And no man shall save thee.
Well, did my little king able to save us? Was Malcolm X able to save us?
Bring it out, Ox.
Or could God be able to save us? No, God said, "No man can save you." Give me Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-eight, verse forty-seven.
Bring it out.
Before he came up, let me show you what we was, uh, what we was teaching. Read what you got.
Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-eight, and verse forty-seven.
The most I said, "The Israelites," this was gonna happen to the Israelites for being disobedient to his commandments. You so-called black people, our Israelites the Bible speaks of. And black on black crime gonna continue to rise in our communities until y'all wake up, repent, and keep God's laws. Read what you got.
That's right. Because thou service not the Lord thy God.
God said, "Since we didn't wanna serve him, for what?"
With joyfulness and with gladness of heart for the abundance of all things.
He said, "Since we ain't wanna serve him for the abundance of all things," read.
Therefore shall thou serve thine enemies.
He said, "Therefore shall you serve your enemies." Read.
Which the Lord shall send against thee.
Read.
In hunger.
In hunger? He said, "You gotta, who, who you gotta serve for food? Who grocery stores you go to for food? Who McDonald's you go to for a burger? Who Kentucky Fried Chicken you go to for chicken? He said, "You gotta serve your enemies in what?"
In hunger.
In hunger and whatever.
And in thirst.
And in thirst. Who you go to for this sun and acryphaea and Coca-Cola? Who you go to for thirst? When you want something to drink? It's called Mifit like acid water.
That's right.
Who you paying your bill to, read?
And in nakedness.
Who you go to for clothes? Who you go to for, uh, your silk, your cotton, your textile? Who you go to to get these things? Who? Who own the clothing store? And God called him your what?
Read that. Therefore shall thou serve thine enemy.
He called him what?
Read. Which the Lord shall send against thee.
Read.
In hunger.
Who sent thine enemy against us?
Which the Lord shall send against thee.
This how you know we ain't coming. This ain't, this ain't no white man doctor right here. This the truth. That's why he can't stand here. He just don't wanna keep God's laws. He don't wanna marry the sister. The hell we out here teaching you, go marry. Basically, look, they trying to despise everything that I said. I said, "Bro, you ain't married to a woman, so what you doing? You dealing with her as a whore." That's what the Bible say. If you sleeping around with a woman and you not married to her, according to God, you dealing with her as a whore.
That's right.
Tired of our brothers dealing with our sisters like whore. Smash our sister, get her pregnant, go to the next one, smash another one, and then spread this damn STDs all over Memphis.
That's right.
We tired of it. Read what you got.
Therefore shall thou serve thine enemies.
God said, "Therefore shall you serve your enemies," read.
Which the Lord shall send against thee.
God sent thine enemies against us for being disobedient, read.
In hunger.
And for food.
And in thirst.
For water.
And in nakedness.
For clothes, we go to them, and for what else?
And in want of all things.
Who you go to for a house? Who you go to for a job? Who bank you go to to cash your paycheck that you got from them? Who money is on the, who put money on, 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 on? Who face on the money? Yo enemies, read.
And he shall put a yoke of iron upon thy neck.
God said, "The same enemy you go to for food, water, and clothes gonna put a yoke of iron on your neck." Until what?
Until he'll destroy thee.
You know these real images right here, don't you?
That's right.
This happened to our people. The Bible is a true book. That's, that's the problem. Our people do not want to self that the Bible is a true book, that's the problem. That's why they gonna continue to die in Memphis. I'm gonna show you something. Give me Hosea nine and six.
Bring it out, Ox.
I'm gonna show you. God said it right here. Since our people refuse to accept, uh, the most I God, and accept this law in their life and to believe this Bible, they gonna continue to die in Memphis, I guarantee you. And things gonna get worse. Long as they keep leaving us out of the equation, it's gonna keep getting worse. Cause whether they like it or not, we built, and it's thousands of us across the world.
That's right.
According to millions. Read what you got.
Hosea, chapter nine, and verse six.
Read.
For lo, they are gone because of destruction.
The most I say our people went into captivity because of the destruction, read.
Egypt shall gather them up.
And that's what we have been gathered up right now, in the land of Egypt, in bondage. This is spiritual Egypt, read.
Memphis shall bury them.
Why are people dying there?
Right here in what? Memphis shall bury them.
Memphis is the third dangerous city in the world. I mean in America.
Bring it out, Ox.
Memphis is the third dangerous city in America, and Memphis gonna keep burying us. Read on. That was it? Read.
The pleasant places for their silver, netless, netless shall possess them. Thorns shall be in their tourniquets.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Okay, okay, that's it right there. So the most our people dying right here in Memphis every day because they refuse to repent. Now I'm gonna show you something, sister. Now look, I'm gonna, uh, give me, uh, "Do you love God?" This is what. Okay. Now look, let me show you something. Give me first John five and three. For real. Now look, you seen his sister brother left, what I'm still doing? Talking loud. But the problem with our men, sister, they too soft. This how a man talk. He don't wanna see me get upset. Hey, he get, he see me get upset, hey, he might, yeah, he might bow down, hey, I don't know what the hell he might do. Read what you got. He don't wanna see me mad. Read what you got.
First John, chapter five, and verse three.
Read.
For this is the love of God.
I wanna tell you something, sister. They said, "This is the love of God," read.
That we keep his commandments.
Look, the problem with our people is that they don't love God. If they love God, you gonna do what according to the Bible? You gonna keep his commandments. I'm gonna give you another, give me Serac two and fifteen. Ecclesiastes two and fifteen. So I'm gonna see how much we love God, sister. Now look, I'm gonna go through the Bible. I'm gonna do what Christ can't teach you. He taught repentance. He taught our people to repent from doing the opposite of what God commanded us to do. That's what we out here for. Look, if we sit up here just like we, I brought those scriptures out about marriage. Don't you think if we had, uh, if, uh, if our people stopped committing dirty and stopped being hornblinders and fornicators, do you think they're not gonna help our communities? Yeah, it can, it can help our community in all ways. You wanna know why? Because imagine if, uh, every man, the first woman they laid with, they, they made her their wife and stayed with. Imagine that. Would it be diseases running around here right now? Would it be AIDS? Would it be herpes? Would it be cholera? But now you gotta worry about that, why? Because every time a dude sit, the woman smashes their man, she can find, these brothers trying to smash, smash every sister they can find. And you know I'm telling you. Read what you got.
The book of Serac, chapter two, and verse fifteen.
Read.
They that fear the Lord.
They say, "They that fear the Lord." If you fear God, sister, read.
Will not disobey his word.
You won't disobey his word. Cause it's punishment for being disobedient to God's word, read.
And they that love him will keep his ways.
And they say, "They that love him will keep his ways." So I'm gonna show you some ways of God that he wants us to keep. Give me First Corinthians, chapter eleven, first. Now look, I'm gonna show you something. You said you love God, right? And to love God is to do what? And, and to do what? Keep his commandments. Keep his ways. Listen to this. First Corinthians, chapter eleven.
The book of First Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse three.
Read.
But I would have you know.
Read.
That the head of every man is Christ.
The head of man is Christ.
And the head of the woman is the man.
The head of the woman is the man, read.
And the head of Christ is God.
And the head of Christ is God. Now listen to this, sister, listen, read.
Every man praying or prophesying having his head covered.
So it's saying, "Every man praying or prophesying having his head covered." Meaning when the word of God coming out. Right now, whenever the word of God coming out, it's the spirit of prophecy. Prophecy, read.
This underth his head.
So do you see any of them? Do we got our head covered with anything? No. Read what you got.
But every woman.
But it say, "But every woman."
Read. That prays or prophesies.
Read.
With her head uncovered, this underth her head.
So you said you love God, right? So if you love God, what you gonna do for now, when the word of God coming out? You gonna cover your head. You gotta put a head covering on. That's only when the word of God coming out, sister. Now, a lot of sisters, they keep it on because you get used to rocking, you coming back to your culture, you get to use the rocking your head route. See, he ain't teaching, he ain't teaching that. Now I'm gonna show you something else. Give me Deuteronomy twenty-two, verse five.
Bring it out.
Go to first Timothy, chapter, go to first Timothy, chapter two, verse nine, first. First Timothy two and nine, let me show you something, sister. Now look, we ain't out here to judge you. We out here to build our people up. These commandments are sitting up here, this what's gonna heal our people, when our people repent and start to keep God's commandments. Now till our people repent and keep God's commandments, evil things gonna, can't happen to us. Trust me, sister. Do you see, they tell truth. Do you see things getting better for our people? It ain't, it ain't. The only way it's gonna get better is if we repent and keep his commandments. Listen to this.
The book of First Timothy, chapter two, and verse nine.
Read.
And like men are also, that women adorn themselves in modest apparel.
So do you know what modest apparel is? God said, now remember, we just, we reading out a little testament too. God said women should adorn themselves in modest apparel. Do you know what a mo, what it means to be modest? To be covered up? Now I'm gonna show you what God want you to be covered in. Give me Deuteronomy twenty-two and five.
Bring it out. The book of Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-two, and verse five.
Read.
The woman shall not wear that which pertaining to a man.
What pertains to men? Pants. And God said, what?
The woman shall not wear that which pertaining to a man.
So if you love God, to repent. I'm gonna show you what it means to, to repent. Give me Second Exodus, chapter sixteen, verse sixty-five. Let me show you.
Bring it out.
Because the most I want you covered in a dress. He don't want you short, cause the pants shows your body out. The most I don't want you showing your body out. The way your body shaped, sister, should be only for your husband. Dude that was out here, he teaching this. He want our women to be, uh, uncovered. He want our women to sit up here and to wear their leggings and to show their shape and to be a sex symbol. We want our sisters to cover up and respect themselves because we love our sisters. Your sins gonna accuse you before God. And how you gonna be accused by them reading out of the book of life, read?
What will ye do? Or how will you hide your sins before God?
See, our people think they can get away and hide their sins from, from God, read.
And his angels.
Read.
Behold, God himself is the judge.
Read.
Fear him. Leave off from your sins.
So God said, "Fear him." In order to fear him, what you gonna do? Not disobey his word. He said, "Fear him." Leave off from your sins, read.
And forget your iniquities.
Read.
To muddle no more with them.
And muddle no more with them, read.
Forever.
Forever. That's how you repent. So look, if you love God.
That's right.
He said, "Don't worry what pertains to a man, what you gonna do for now? You gonna wear a dress. You gonna wear a dress. You gonna cover your body. When the word of God coming out, you gonna sit up there, you gonna cover your head." That's what we out here to teach our people. Now you know, uh, six people got shot, served, right? How far than that? I'm gonna show you something. Give me, give me, uh, Exodus twenty, verse seven. I'm gonna show you something. Exodus twenty, verse eight. What is served according to, uh, God? So when is it Sabbath day? Sunday? No, it ain't Sunday. Remember, the Roman Catholic Church changed the Sabbath day from Saturday to Sunday, have you ever heard that? Yeah. So our people worshiping all Sunday, which is Sunday worship. So you know if you go to church on Sunday, you know there's Sunday worship, right? That's iedom. Now look, listen to this. Read what you got.
The book of Exodus, chapter twenty, and verse eight.
Read.
Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy.
Now look, I'm gonna show you something. Over six, seven people got shot, served. God told our people to remember his Sabbath day to keep it holy, read.
Six days shall down labor and do all thy work.
The most I give us six days to do work. That's Sunday through Friday. Friday sundown to Saturday sundown, that is the Sabbath day. Why do we start at sundown? Cause according to Genesis, chapter one, verse four, he said, "The evening and the morning was the first day." So a day begins when? According to God, in what? In the evening, when the sun go down. Just like when the sun just went down, it begins a new day.
That's right.
That's how we, that, see? The problem is, this world has been turned upside down, and it's time for us to come back to God and do the things the way he, uh, uh, set it up for us to do. Read what you got.
That's right. Verse ten. But the seventh day is the Sabbath of the Lord thy God.
So imagine this. The Sabbath day is the Sabbath of the Lord thy God. Imagine if our people were resting, sister. Imagine, was our, if our people was not buying, not selling, not working, not clubbing Saturday night, how many people you think would've got shot? Black people. If all along was keeping God's Sabbath day holy. Let me show you what it means to be holy. Give me Romans, chapter seven, verse twelve. If our people was still being obedient to God's commandments, how many people would've got shot Saturday? None of them. None of them would've got shot Saturday if our people was obedient to God's command. See, we got the solution out here. Whether they like it or not, we got it. Whether they like it or not, that's how you know, look, sister, you, you seeing how hypocritical it is? I'm telling you that. I wanna know, I wanna ask you something. How was you able to get on this? Is that your mother? Okay. Okay, okay, okay. And now, when they, in these means, what do they speak about? What, what is the solution, though? What is the solution?
Well, in there, they were talking about how the mothers, how they were feeling about their sons getting shot.
Yeah.
That's what they were when I was.
Yeah.
But they were talking about.
And then, so it's always the mothers speaking about their kids getting shot, right? The problem is, the damn black man ain't in the household. See, look, I'm gonna show you something. Give me Genesis, chapter eighteen, that verse nineteen. I'm gonna show you what God commands the black man. That's the problem here. These young men growing up, sister, just like their brother. You talking loud to me. You talking loud. That's the problem. You get loud with a black man, he wanna shoot your kid. Oh, bro, why you hollering at me? You can't even talk loud to a black man without him think you fussing him. Give me Genesis eighteen, verse nineteen. That's a man, man, that can get from God, listen to this.
The book of Genesis, chapter eighteen, and verse nineteen.
Read.
For I know him.
God said, "I know him." Talk me about Abraham, read.
That he will command his children.
You know what God commands us to do? He said, "Command your children." Read.
And his household.
And your household. Command your children and your wife, read.
After him.
After me. After the Lord, read.
And they shall keep the way of the Lord.
Keep God's commandments. Read on.
To do justice and judgment.
Give me Genesis thirty and thirteen. That's the problem. The men need to be in the household. These young black men don't know who they are. That's why he was sitting up here talking that stuff. I'm like, look, I'm saying the black man, when I was in the neighborhood, I ain't care who, who was an African, or whatever the hell you, you could've been anything. Ain't care. You know what I'm saying? I still don't care. Now, all I care about are the people that are in, uh, that are oppressed right here, right now, in our community. Who are the Israelites?
That's right.
It is right there. And the reason why I care now, I got here in the home field. The people who reading about home fields, they used to be in here for. But now, so our people wake up and repent. I repent and start to keep God's laws. That one changes us.
That's right.
That one change our people. Look, sister, gang members can come to us all the evening, that one, they ain't out there. You gotta lead the gang along. You gotta come and serve God. You gotta command your children and your household after the way of the Lord. Give me Genesis thirty-three, listen to this.
The book of Genesis, chapter thirty, and verse thirty.
Check this out.
For it was little, which thou hadst before I came.
Read.
And it is now increased unto a multitude.
Read.
And the Lord has blessed thee since my coming.
Read.
And now.
Now listen to what Jacob said, read.
And now, where shall I provide?
He said, "Where shall I provide?"
For my own house also.
For my own house. The man, God, God commands the man to provide for his own house.[1400.51]